We have a motion. Any discussion? Harry, man, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and negative. We have minutes from both the seventeenth and the twenty-second. If there's no major changes, we'll do them both at once and document. Motion?
Yeah, we have a motion that we have heard with a couple of little minor errors. And I have not yet.
Good.
What's the minor?
Super minor. Super minor.
Three, you remember? Okay.
Super minor. Yeah.
Harry, man, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and negative. Great, welcome back.
Yes, thank you. Um, it was good to be back, there's some out there and we got some rain, so things are good. Things are rolling. Um, so my first item, I got seven permits with KCTC. I think last week Tracy came up and brought you another large batch, so this is again the same one. Uh, we've got Benton Avenue and two hundred and seventieth Street, Dakota Avenue, two hundred and fiftieth Street, Fremont Avenue and three hundred Street, Graham Avenue and three hundred and twenty-fifth Street, and Hickory Avenue. And then we have the Henry Jefferson Avenue, Benton Avenue, Henry Lee Street, and then Ash Avenue. So Andrew has been the one that's been looking those over, um, and doing those in preparation and working closely to those concerns. Um, I'll have two right away, or excuse me, one right away permit for a paid entrance. This is for Kim Grove there on Franklin Avenue, they're gonna do a little larger approach of some concrete. And I did give them the approval to move forward with it as they, everything is in place and they have some time in their schedules with the concrete. And then the last one is a self-applied dust control. And move forward with that, um, as the weather work for them this week. And then this is a dust control self-applied. These care permits, um, as far as the maintenance update goes, um, so yesterday we replaced a larger crossroad pipe on the Henry Lee Street. It was, uh, I think it's a sixty-six inch pipe, um, sixty or sixty-six. And, uh, they got that put in yesterday, we did some prep work the day before, we're getting the site ready. Um, but being a larger pipe, uh, we had, I mean, uh, both excavator and our grader all down there. Did, you know, that one, we got it backfilled last night, at least restored back to, to the traffic. And then today they're working on roof wrap and finishing up the slopes out there and, uh, potentially be out there tomorrow as well. Uh, but that was kind of a bigger project this week. Is that where you were burning it, brushing it down after all? Or by stuff in this part? Yes, correct, yeah, 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 they're on the south side, they did have a burn pile down there, so, yes. Um, then Old Highway thirty-four, uh, seating is pretty well complete. Uh, the work on some road control items, so we got it seeded, then we had that rain, um, we were gonna put some matting down, so today they went out and put a little bit out. We're gonna have to wait for it to dry up before we can put some more on, we're trying to get that, uh, soil stabilized out there is what we're working on next. And I think Tracy had made a comment there last week that, uh, they're anticipating being in here in the middle of May to start that project, um, with the contractor. How well Helen is the prime and yours who will be doing some of the subwork early on with that project. Um, and so a lot more information, we'll get a little bit closer to that or whatever. Uh, seeding, again, working on other areas, um, throughout the county that we've got, um, where we've got some ditching and different things like that, they're following behind that. They should be able to seed it, and then, uh, we have Pete working on various, uh, sites. So a lot of our efforts was on that crossroad pipe and working on Old Highway thirty-four. Miss Lays Construction, Norris asphalt, uh, they did have a decent week last week, obviously, they came there. Um, so now we're waiting for the ditches to dry and then we resume, uh, topsoil spraying. Uh, Iowa Bridge Culver, that project's on hold with two hundred and thirty-fifth Street, so, um, just waiting on the fall for that to get started. Downstone, uh, they continue crushing operation, um, we're just shy of fifty thousand tons processed, so that would be the one-inch road stone, the bedding stone, and then the line that we had to pay for when we had produced that, so, um, we're not quite halfway, so we're gonna take it. Um, and then the last item we had is, uh, we'll just kind of notification, we'll make sure you have any projections. We're gonna start advertising for a part-time road equipment operators, this would be our seasonal help that we use in the summertime for mowing, sometimes to help out the pipe, pipe crew. So, um, we currently have, uh, two guys that are working, um, we're not necessarily adding a third one, but one who's gonna start backing off of the hours that they're working, so. Um, we use them for our mowing operations, and then, like I said, also when, sometimes when our summer crews haul rock or whatever else we need at the time. So I was gonna get that posted today and then put signs out front and do some advertising for that, so. Um, and that's really no benefits with the job, so that is a, it is a seasonal help, so it's not a permanent position. Is that a classified job, so you don't have to worry about them moving from area to area? Uh, it is a job description that we have for them, that is a part-time equipment operator position, so they would have to be promoted. And we have had people move from that position and apply for a full time. But within that part-time category, they can bounce around and help get any area you want. We're a non-union shop, so, I mean, from the standpoint of essentially all of our job descriptions at the bottom and some, and all other duties, so. Um, yeah, we're, we get, most of the time, I mean, it used to be upfront on, you know, a lot of times it's our retired guys that will come back and come in and fill in for Roger Askey's, he's done it for years for us, and he'll come in and if we have somebody that's off injury or sick, he'll come in and fill in for a blade for us, and that's really critical to be able to keep somebody in that machine, um, to do it. But he's been doing a lot of mowing for us over the years, so. Okay, okay, thank you. That is it, unless you guys have any questions for me? Thanks, thank you. Oh. It's pretty routine, it's not hard. See you guys.
Okay, so, um, the first thing I'll go over is the Fellowship of Cup agreement that you guys have had probably since general, well, since Fellowship Cup started. Um, you always sign an agreement with Fellowship Cup because each month you contribute five hundred dollars to them towards the, um, cost of food to provide for, um, individuals who come in and receive food assistance. And so it's just a pretty basic agreement, um, what we expect from them, what we'll do in return. And when they invoice me, um, I get an email that gives us the totals for the month, um, it gives you the totals of parcels served, individuals served, um, cost of food bank, and then, um, if they buy other things like meat or something like that, they'll list that, but I do always get the food budget from Ken. Um, and then I believe it says there has to be a eligibility, and with the food bank, they have to do a bit of an eligibility, so all of that stuff is in process. As he does those statistics before. We just need to approve that, so we can get that taken care of, so it's in effect July first.
Motion to approve disagreement with the Fellowship Cup?
Yeah, we should approve that, plus our amount of six thousand a year.
Yes, sir.
Discussion.
Maybe Robbie can help me understand, when did, when did that come out, was it non-departmental?
Yeah.
So it ties into all the other?
Non-departmental.
Non-departmental funds that we contribute to over the course of the year? Okay.
And it's also a requirement of the code that we've declared before.
Um, food is not?
Is that part of it?
Not in code specifically, it's just something that you've always done.
Are we also paying something, so the food bank?
You still do fifteen hundred dollars a month, or excuse me?
Year.
Fifteen hundred dollars a year to them.
How do you deal with that?
And the food, the Fellowship stuff.
Fellowship.
The Fellowship agreement comes out G instead of the?
The five hundred dollars a month comes out of general assistance.
Oh, okay, okay, that makes sense, okay, I better understand that, thank you.
Any other discussion? All of us in favor, say aye.
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 You send in yours, Chad, let's see how it works.
You do want three copies?
I want two, so Chad's already made notes on it.
Yeah, I think that's script.
So do I, but that's okay, you can still have it, just one little note. Turn around and burn a copy of it. Got it, it's working.
Alright, then for my monthly report, um, I had sixteen general assistance contacts, I, and that's definitely a spike for, um, the thirty-day reporting period. Uh, I spent a total of fifteen point five hours, which is seven percent of my time allocation doing general assistance work. The office was closed seven and a half days, um, six days for meetings and a day and a half of vacation. Um, I had ten individuals that were determined ineligible immediately, um, one individual reports no income. I had three that were over our income guidelines, uh, two were asking for a first month's transfer deposit, four went past due bills, and, um, that's, you know, pretty standard. And you also see I noted, uh, we'd used six direct cremations out of the ten to date, and when we were at five direct cremations, I did notify the funeral homes here in Henry County, but we were halfway through our allocation.
So we'll, any idea what caused the spike? That's pretty high, I'm afraid where you've been.
Um, typically you'll see a spike in January, um, utility companies want to, um, those bills that haven't been paid, they start doing cancellations and disconnects and things like that. And so people will come in and try and get assistance at that time, and, um, you know, we always look at, we can help you one time and it needs to remedy the problem. It doesn't remedy the problem, it's not a good investment to help you one time and you're in the same situation.
Okay.
So, that's what I look at.
Do you have an update on your situation and how that's gonna proceed in July?
Um, can you give me more?
Well, the dissipation of the department and how it's gonna pull in, Dan, are, do we have any more information?
Um, as far as?
Yeah, with Katie?
Yeah, we've, I've transferred everything to her, all of the documents that I use, and, um, years ago we got a, like, a general assistance manual, and I gave her all of the forms re-formatted to have public health information on there, so, um, probably as we know, an end date. If it's not prior to June thirtieth, we'll come, I'll come in or I'll have one of her, one of her staff come over and just kind of go over my cheat sheet that I fill out every time I get a general assistance contact, so, but I think we're ready to hand off at any time, 'cause we've been pretty good about touching base and getting the tool she needs into her hands.
Mark, do we know what, how that impacts us for our budget for that?
As far as?
Overall dollars?
The only thing would be, uh, our unemployment with her staff, if that would be, but otherwise, we've not changed this at all.
Okay, so that's two people?
Pretty, pretty. I mean, everybody's actively looking, so all of our goals are not to be on unemployment, but we never know.
That's good.
And what, and apart from the transition of general assistance, can you just go as was or as is, to your problem?
We aren't changing any policies, we aren't changing, we're just picking up where Sarah left off.
What dollars it says, okay, alright, good, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, the first sheet I gave you was the ordinance, and then the second one's the, uh, Chevy. So kind of little history on why we're looking at this. As you guys all know, especially in the spring, there's a lot of burning, uh, we can put on burn bans through the state. But when that happens, um, really putting it on is not a big deal. Um, I, I contact all the fire chiefs, kinda give you a rundown of how it happens. Um, I contact all the fire chiefs, because more, more than likely, one or more of them have contacted me on the burn ban. Um, I get the approval of a fire chief saying they want the burn ban. I fill out paperwork, I send it into the state, the state fire marshal then reviews it, and then he says, yes or no, um, that we can have a burn ban within the county. Generally, that's not a big deal, that's an easy fix. The more difficult part is, when are we gonna take the burn ban off? You know, like, this year I had one fire chief contact me, he's like, I think we can take the burn ban off. Okay, so I sent it out to all the fire chiefs, and said, what do you guys think? They're like, well, this is not gonna Wednesday. Well, Thursday is gonna be windy, so we probably don't wanna do it tomorrow. Friday, the forecast says it should be alright, but Saturday, they're projecting more wind, so we don't wanna, well, you know, and it, it gets into that yin and yang kind of thing where yes, no, yes, no, let's wait till Monday and see how the weather is. I, I actually have one fire chief say, let's wait till Monday, because I don't wanna go out this weekend. You know, um, and we're all having problems with retention of firefighters, um, throughout the nation, really, I mean. Um, we do have some businesses that will let their people go, um, to fires. Uh, if they get paged, they get paid, a lot of them, they don't even have to clock out, they just tell the supervisor, hey, we got a fire, we gotta go. Um, we don't want that to go away because of people burning when they shouldn't be and whatnot. And so at an emergency management meeting, district meeting, we were discussing this as a district, and one of them, one county says, well, we're looking at putting in a county fire ban. We're like, what, what does that look like? And so, um, we got some copies of stuff and, and everything. And what this does is, one, it spells out that people, whether it was a fire ban on or not, shall, right now we ask, when people do the, and now it says you shall call dispatch and say, hey, I'm gonna burn today, um, or tomorrow, or whatever the case may be, um, this is my name, this is my address, this is my phone number, this is my mitigation plan of how, if the fire gets out of hand, how I can help put it out. That kind of says so that if Chad's gotten, found on his motorcycle and he sees a, sort of a smoke someplace, he'll call in and say, hey, we have a fire at wherever, and the dispatch calls up the fire department, the fire department gets there and the people go, no, we're good. That happens quite a bit. This way Chad calls it in, dispatches, yeah, we have it on the list that they're supposed to be burning today. We, dispatch can call them and say, hey, are you good? And whatnot. What this also does is, anytime there's a red flag warning put out by the National Weather Service, then it turns into a burn ban for the county. And so what that does for us is, most of the red flag warnings, um, they're put out because the conditions are not safe to burn. We don't have to go through the whole step of the state, and most of the red flag warnings say, there's a red flag warning from today at two-thirty to tomorrow at six o'clock. And Mark, as a farmer, knows now, okay, at six o'clock, the red flag warning's coming off, I can prepare to burn tomorrow afternoon, tomorrow evening, top thing. So it helps the fire departments out as a burn ban is put in, in that timeframe, and it gives the farmers and whoever else is burning, um, kind of an outlook and going, okay, let's plan on burning at this time. There are penalties, um, in here for first offense and repeat offenses. And I'll give you a good example, not this last weekend, but I think it was the weekend before last, on Friday I was going home south of New London, there was a, a field fire. Time I got there, the whole pine trees and everything was on fire, um, little island in the middle of the field, it was all on fire and everything, and there was nobody around. And when we did finally contact the person, he's like, oh, when I left at three o'clock, it was out. This was four o'clock, and the whole place was on fire, and there was an oil barrel or something in there, and it exploded. It went twenty feet above the pine trees, and you guys have it on, on film, um, and whatnot. The fire department ended up going back three times to that same place over the weekend. One time, okay, we understand it. Two times, let's get serious here, and then by the third time, it was like, are you serious, we're going back there again, you know? And this gives us the ability as, as a commander or the law enforcement to give them warnings. It also gives opportunity to educate people, but, uh, it also gives opportunity to find. And, uh, so, um, all the fire chiefs are on board in the county, the sheriff has reviewed it, um, he's on board, we sent it to the county attorney's office, uh, they've reviewed it. And Steve has given his blessing on it, and then Joe topped this up, which, I don't know if it sounded like, there's a couple of topples, sounds like, so, uh, we'll get those fixed. But I wanted to present it to you guys to get your opinions and questions on it, and see if we could, um, proceed in making this a ordinance. And I think it's a very, a good thing for the fire departments, when I was talking with the chiefs, to go out and do community outreach. So this fall, you know, they can take these to the people that they know is gonna be burning next spring and whatnot, and say, hey, this is a new ordinance. We're not out here to jam you up, you know, and communicate with them and educate the public that way, and the farmers and those people that burn, um, and whatnot, so. Any questions?
Yes. If this would be implemented, who's the money due to?
Well, that's, that was gonna be a question I have for you guys. The fire departments say they, they should get the money, and I agree with them, because they're out doing the work. Uh, but that's a question for you guys, so.
Yeah, under our ordinances, the money would first come to the county, and then you guys can decide where it goes from there.
If it's a multi-jurisdictional, they could divide it then.
You could divide it or?
And, uh, my first thought is, uh, we need to give educational advice, but otherwise, I don't think, after the first attempt, I don't think a repeat offense is enough fine, to tell you the truth.
The, the one thing with that's in here is, um, the fine, court cost, and then, um, reasonable FEMA rates. And what reasonable FEMA rates are, is that fire truck has a value. That blower has a value, that firefighter has a value. And, I mean, you could, if you really wanted to make it hurt, if you want to put it that way, you can make it hurt in the pocketbook. Because you start stacking up all those values. But I know one department lost three, two blowers and two or three hoses at one of the fires. But, burned up, ran out, however you wanna call it, um, so that could go onto that person that, the repeat offender that, you know, say, okay, you owe us one of these blowers now.
And then Steve, how would you enforce that?
Um, the original enforcement's gonna be the officers out in the field that'll write the citations and stuff like that. With the, for lack of a better word, restitution, um, we'll just proceed in court with that. Yeah, it's more of a civil action, it's not a criminal action, it's a civil action.
How would this impact people burning, required burning on crop grounds, CRB, you know? I, I think some of those programs require a, uh, a yearly or yearly burning, how would that be affected by it? I mean, I think there's dates and time periods, you gotta get that done.
I personally think it would help it, because right now, if we say a burn ban is on, that's no burning from the time we put it on to the time we take it off, that could be two weeks. You know, with this, a red flag warning, that could be two days.
Yeah.
Then you could burn for a couple of days, and maybe it goes back on a couple of days. So you have some windows that you could burn, whereas if we put on a state fir, or burn ban, there's no burning until we take it off, and that could, like I said, it could be two weeks, it could be whatever. So I think it would help in that situation. And, and I'm like, I know if you've burned before and you've had, you know, your blowers and your water, and, I mean, you're responsible doing it. So, and I think it also in here has, the fire chiefs could give you a permit to burn if it's in, it's in that window type thing. But I think a red flag warning, generally, they don't put it on too long, I think if they put it on for the right amount of time, so.
And that would be more up to you and, and the fire chiefs at that point, right?
It'd be up to the fire chiefs.
And help communicate that out to the community?
Yeah, and, and, and that, that's one I could help with, and my department would help with, was the education part of it. We'd go on the radio, we'd go on the newspaper, you know, we'd go out to, um, Farm Bureau, top meetings and stuff, and educate. But the, uh, fire chiefs and the law enforcement would do the, the, uh, fines and that kind of stuff. You know, I'm, I'm not an assistant commander, I'm a support unit, I'll help them any way I can, but that decision comes up on the, because the third jurisdiction, or whatnot, so.
So a couple of concerns, I think, uh, number one, with your example, you know, the person started the fire, obviously, and, and the fire, uh, departments had to come up two or three times, I guess. I do have a concern there, because you would hope that with their expertise, they'd be able to get it up first time, or maybe the second time, third time, I'm a little concerned.
He relit.
Okay.
He relit.
I think you maybe forgot to tell us that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, he relit every time.
So that would be my huge.
You know, re-spin, go on the relays, yeah.
Yeah, I would be concerned if we were gonna go out there and charge somebody.
No, no.
Because it does happen.
It does happen at times, I mean, there was one fire, uh, east of town here that, uh, the fire department was like, we got it all out, I actually had it drawn out that day, it was thermal, and I found a hot spot, and it was underneath.
Usually, yeah.
Something, you know, like?
A mass of something.
Go check that out, they went back out there, and they're like, oh, we glad we did, because with the wind, we'd been back out here in a half hour, but it was like next to another field, it didn't catch fire, you know?
Yeah.
So, but they're usually pretty good about making sure on hot spots.
So do our local contractors, do they connect with the sheriff, you know? Like, for example, out here on two hundred and thirty-fifth, when we were burning those pytholes, or when the county was burned down off of Henry Lee?
We, we, we asked everybody to, but most people probably don't.
Right, I understand.
And so that's where the education piece, you know, we give this scale to, so if, like, the guys, his guys were burning.
Right.
You know, they need to call the sheriff's office and say, hey, we're gonna be burning this spot.
So think, think, same thing with contractors, right?
Yeah.
Tree lines.
Anybody that's gonna be burning needs to. Yeah, anybody that's, anybody that's gonna be burning needs to contact sheriff's office and let them know that they're burning. So that, again, if somebody's driving by, they call it in. Cause that, that happens all the time. And they can look at it and go, you know, I don't know how many times I've heard on the radio, fire department getting there, they're like, that's a control burn.
You know, the required, in, in my mind, the required notification makes sense because everybody's joined at the hip by these people's cell phones anyway. And, you know, it's just a phone call away and say, hey, I'm gonna be here, I'm doing a burn here. It is controlled by, I call in to What's that?
For the fire chief, yeah.
Yeah, you know, um, in that case, yeah. You know, in, in loss of equipment on a grass fire, unless it was extenuating circumstances, well, I'd hate to think that's fire department, still be losing blowers and hoses and fire trucks. So that's, that's kind of a, a fire command, uh, incident command type thing, you know. Could it happen? Yeah, but boy, I, I think that would be far and few between.
It's almost boring once you get out there and you start blowing, that hot air starts cycling through the
But there ought to be a training element in there that you, you wouldn't put your equipment in jeopardy like that, you know, type thing.
So recreational fires
Cause a blower is an excellent tool.
So recreational fires, you can ban during the red light.
I'd have to reread how it says it.
Recreational, I need to spell it.
Right, right. I, I've, I've read this and then I've, I've done some other things and I can't remember. I was thinking recreational and, uh, the, um, burning barrels, as long as they have a screen on top of them with a one inch, no more than a one inch square, um, could still be used. You've never seen how it, they've ordered?
I can't remember how we had it worded. There was something there on it.
Uh, article, article eight on the last page, exemptions. Real smokers, outdoor fire places, recreational fires, burning barrels, fireworks.
So basically anybody with a fire pit in their backyard or on the driveway?
In your, you're watching it and you're entertaining it and you're Put my fire pit out back and just walked off and went to ball game. That's not very responsible.
The county ordinances can have that extensive of fines?
Yeah, or can have fines.
Does the fine come from after warnings? Like, do they have to come out for damage or if they show up and you don't have the fire registered?
It, it could be both. For the most part, I think, in talking with the chiefs, if, if you came out and they came out to your place the first time and you, you were trying to do the right thing, you know, whatnot, and they'd say, hey, you know, we do have this ordinance. You know, they, they give you a warning, they, you know, try to help educate, help you out, you know, to Mark's point. You know, the second time, third time that you come out, you know, the next week, you do the same thing, okay. Now it's time to start taking some action.
So some of this, you, you said it was up to the fire chief, fire discretionary court cap, if I like that.
Fire chiefs
No reason.
In the law enforcement, yeah. And Rich wanted to change it from sheriff's office and deputies, that's where originally it said, to law enforcement. So that it could be state pro, it could be local PD, it could be a D O T officer, former D O T, I guess. It could be any certified police officer, um, just write the citation.
Chad? So, the county attorney's office has looked at, has this gone through the P and Z commission, you know, or, well, I know Joe's looked at it, you said
I gave to Joe for him to, for him to, to put it here, but not the planning, I don't think he put it on planning zoning.
I don't think it's a planning zoning decision.
I think he said that the next step would be for you guys to do a public hearing, um, for it. And then, um, after that, do your first, second, third readings and if you guys wanted to vote it in and
It, to me, it would almost seem like the P and Z, I'll look at it and see if they have any input on it.
Is it a, is it a planning and zoning issue?
I don't see it.
Not a planning and zoning issue?
I don't see it at all.
Yeah, apparently he didn't because he didn't
Yeah, I, well, I, I guess, when I said that, I thought, I, I thought, well, he, he didn't get it.
So I was not saying Joe didn't because he, otherwise he would have went, this needs to go by the zoning, you know, when he was doing it, so.
Yeah, that's why I asked the question as well. It's an ordinance, I understand, but, uh, most ordinances go through those folks just to make sure that they understand what's happening. If they have any questions as well, it's kind of consistency in the process.
Cause I don't think you'll, you know, on the number of fires and the number of tripouts, this year seems like has been extraordinary.
The, the fire chiefs, that they have already exceeded their numbers from last year, um, fire callouts this year.
And it just, you know, as you had mentioned, and we talked a little bit, you know, out riding motorcycles, looking around and things like that. There was one fire I went by, I'm riding a motorcycle and like, you're burning today. I mean, that was, it was one of these you ride sideways because of the wind, you know. And I asked them if they were good and they said, yeah, we're good. Well, I didn't go four miles up the road and the, the fire trucks were going down there to it, so.
And, and just so you guys also know, I like consistency, um, and whatnot. Uh, I believe Jefferson County is starting to look at the fire ordinance. We got this in Washington County, but I, I believe they're proceeding with an ordinance. The Wayne County, I think, they're either looking or they already have one. And Van Buren County's looking at it. So our neighbors are starting to look at it as well, um, and whatnot. So, uh, and most of us got the same template, if you will. So hopefully it's kind of insistent all over because we have farmers that help our be in Henry County and they help our be in Jefferson and Washington County and, and whatnot. And, you know, so, uh, it'd be where the fire originated at. So, so if they was, started burning in Jefferson County, they came over into Henry County, which we have this year. It's, it's where the fire originated at, so.
I guess the only other concern I have just to share with everybody, and you mentioned this a little bit ago, is that we need to keep a handle on this, obviously. But again, to Chad's point earlier, CRP from a mid-contract management program, you have to burn at some point without getting some violations. So you can burn up to one May and you can't touch it again until one August. So it kind of ties back into some contractual obligations you have with the F S A, U S D A in order to make sure all of this works. So, we have some limited timeframe, to your point, you know, with the wind, and nobody has any control over that, obviously. So as long as the fire chiefs are using some pretty good discretionary judgment on some of this stuff, I, I'm okay with it. But I just hate to give anybody a blank check and say, hey, you had a fire and you, you should have been in more control. Cause obviously that happens with the wind. Nobody knows.
Oh, yeah, that happened with that. But we've talked with, um, pheasants forever. You know, that's the big thing is the pheasants, uh, when they roost and have their eggs and
Well, just, yeah.
And all that kind of stuff, so.
Foul in general in CRP, kind of the whole purpose of it.
Right. You know, and, and that discretionary call would, would come from the fire officials, not law enforcement, right?
It'd be injunction. They've worked together. Either they'll say instant commander or law enforcement. Which instant commander could be the fire chief or it could be the captain, whoever the senior fire person is on the call.
As long as we have that understanding, just a little discretion there. I mean, CRP folks are contractually obligated.
Right. And, you know, you figure most of these, all these fire chiefs, they live in communities, they're, half of them are farmers themselves and have to do the CRP burn offs themselves and everything. So, uh, they're not, like I said, they're not out to jam people up because they gotta move these people.